Lord Mayor, our members will note the use of the way we can set up our values evening in order to make certain that this is for all present this evening. Guidance and advice will be received by all members separately in relation to the required threat of wearing masks when moving to a relative seat under the procedure for the conduct of meeting. Apologies for absence. Lord Mayor, kind advice members, apologies for absence to be received from Councillor Paul Brown, Malcolm Kennedy, Nick Crofts, Gerard Woodhouse, Maureen Delanty, Marie Tudor, Joanna Calvert, Natalie Meters, George Schmidt, Rose Groves and Lisa Law.
The right of the apologies?
Stay with your seats. Stay with your seats.
Thank you. Can I remind members that the least fair of the council to help us sort of so free and on behalf of the council that send our congratulations to both Gerard and David? I also want to advise that in terms of timing, all speakers this evening will be allocated to talk for three minutes.
Declaration of the Decessive, Lord Mayor. Can I remind members that your earlier fire declared that meetings can disclose all the Cuban group prejudicial threats in which case it would be illegal to leave the hall due consideration of the item. I await such declarations.
Can I move that the minutes of the extraordinary city council meeting, the extraordinary city council meeting held on the day of March 2021, together with the extraordinary city council meeting held on the 19th of May 2021, be approved? Is that agreed? Councillor Roberts?
Just before I'm there, under the extraordinary meeting on the second amendment, would you prefer to see a recording of the group's voting for the second amendment? If you could record that then green and may group sort of gets the our second amendment, just to be consistent.
Lord Mayor, the report now conglration to the office of the elected mayor of Liverpool on the 6th of May 2021. Can I formally report the 2021 election results to the office of the elected mayor of Liverpool are set out on pages 35 to 37 of the agenda this evening?
On behalf of full council, I'd like to turn to the new mayor of Liverpool, Joanna Calvert, to office. You are welcome.
And report the 96th of Lord Mayor reports on the election houses on 6th of May 2021. Can I formally report the 2021 election results are set out on pages 38 to 48 of the agenda this evening?
Councillor Roberts, I can't speak to me to say that you're fine. There's always an error from the two boards. Please do not. There's an error of source on the job. It says that the Liverpool House Cabinet are here cautious of being in the hand as it actually was challenged. My staff have been here today, we should say Liverpool House Cabinet is a requirement for the approach to the council.
Thank you, Councillor Roberts. Notes six. On behalf of full council, I would like to offer all new councillors, and if I can say nothing else to you in your time, make the best of it that you can. It's a great work. We're now moving on to page 77, the adoption of the new COVID contract for elected members and the COVID practice of elected members and officers. Councillor Roberts?
No, okay. As far as our previous ones are being ongoing discussions in the moment that are working quickly with the view to introducing a new COVID contract for elected members. The new COVID set out of 10 to 12 of the report and submitted to Councillor where adoption was an adoption and largely based on the LKA of COVID contact to ensure in terms of voting. In addition, it has recommended a recent best value exception report, a separate COVID contact for raising regulatory functions, such as planning and licensing set out of appendix to the report and submitted to Councillor for adoption. Lastly, I in response to the recommendation of the fractional person in scrutiny command, a new COVID practices proposed for both elected members and officers. COVID practice is set out of 10 to 30 of the report and is submitted to Councillor for adoption.
Councillor Roberts? I can advise that councillors, rich and blind, patient can conceive others which to address the council on this matter. When I call your name, will you come forward to the left head at the front of the hall to address the meeting please? If all the members wish to speak, please indicate now so that we can know your names and I'll guide you forward in time. So first my supervisor, rich and blind, to address the council. And I remind all councillors that this is rich and blind to seek, so please be disciple.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and many congratulations to someone who knows such a day exists. And also thanks to Garcher Anderson on her noble attempts to break the manhood of politics in his group this council for the last day. To congratulate them on their proof of such a diverse talent. I, the 2014 member of the Labour Party president, was upset, angry and frustrated by the findings of the House of Lords and I'd like to take this opportunity to reiterate our willingness to work with you, to the people of this city, to ensure they get best army of this council. But, Lord Mayor, as we take this journey together, let me be clear, I hope of all these intimidated, more silenced, like some of those who have been before me. My intention on my evening's speech was to bear also to my predecessor, as I thought that the power of Congress from a concern of criticism, she would be raised in the course of highest spiritual respect for each other despite our political differences. But that refusing my handshake to commiserate with the council, instead I decided to hear your share of the long, powerful science. Another victory was by exclusive exempt actions, none of which members would be aware or made before decisions. Perhaps a mayor could therefore alert the councilmen, whether like their predecessor, she would also be assumed to be the overall council leader. If so, then this is course nonsense, not least because she does not even have a house. I believe if you're serious about carrying the time of child's life out, it's probably suicide for a mayor and the two roles must be totally separated. It is accident of this which give what is in positions of our name. It's why the biggest recognition was added and why when you're on the doors, people say, "You're all saying, you're all good yourselves, it's too much I say and not as I do." And unfortunately, there have been too many encounters about. And that's why I want all this new COVID contract, a COVID contract of masses, to ensure the sound of service to every city or the highest that it possibly can. It's 26 years since I first sought protection as the paper candidates in ground me to have part of my decided as the fifth councilman elected to this council. There must be six star councils with my grandmother left in hiding in the late 40s. I am here to give a voice to the people who feel the power of power and I only hope that I can achieve as much to my dad and my mum, my uncle Paul and our child, as they did through 75 years of human service, they did, served the distinction. It was the late John Kennedy who said, "If you don't lock the door in politics, you might as well lock the door and throw in people." I hope that we, if we all work together as a reflection of past mistakes and ensure that we will form a positive as the city's reputation is restored. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, to President of the Council of Time on his evening's speech. May the presence of justice of this council by the President of the Pachua, the inclined clan, although any five, over a particularly forty year service itself, who's come to check that the style of this town is behaving itself, is a pleasure to see you to appear as well. In many ways, this is the most important document which this council will begin with in this year, because it sets the tone for how we will behave. A council high as we are today, as a council, we cannot behave well and several relationships which we have needed to be built have not been overthrown. The way members in this shape have sometimes treated each other has been appalling. The way some members deal with officers or so as servants is appalling. The way that some officers and members have worked with developers and contractors inappropriately is wasteful. Now, we will be receiving a series of documents, like the one we had today, like the one we dealt with last week, which looked at our improvement plan, in which officers and members will be trained into better ways of doing things. And that must apply to every single one of us. We must act with dignity and appropriateness at all times. And in particular, I must say that I will challenge poor behaviour and sexist comments wherever I sit. And there was one made at the last meeting of this council a week ago that I didn't appropriately challenge. If we get misjudged, the documents actually mean something. We will be doing this in a bad way. We will be creating inappropriate relationships. So don't just pass this motion today. Embrace it and we should all work better and differently in future to create a council that this city should be proud of. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Can I invite councillor Steve Alfred to address the council?
The COVID contract, often something new, we may have different variations of it. And I'll only describe this in sets in respect, it should bear as confidantes of the social work, but to often the past have been used to suppress legitimate frustration and legitimate criticism of senior officers and senior officers not fulfilling their obligations. So a reason for this, respect can be demanded, but respect should be earned. And that should be the thing that is not in the law. If we want to get respect from people, we actually have to earn it, not just the way the documents are about. And that means having members who do do all the answers with equal respect. That means senior officers who act to uphold the constitution, not excuse its abuses. And I think I might have a microphone, I don't wish to, though I say it later today. It should also not inhibit us during constructive communication. And I don't ask many members might not draw their eyes to page 94, when we're talking about pre-application discussions between developers and officers. I think we all watched on the idea of creating mining application between officers and developers, but actually there's a little positive role of all members encouraging developers to meet their community and design better plans for their community. And I hope we see this as a guide, not as a to the progression. And I may not body it, I have less of a sympathy to look at the development of the doctors side. I'd say also, I have received from the council, we have got a better development site by evolving the community and developer. We did so with an ensure of a principle that there was more than one councillor present in all discussions. So I think it's a good footprint, but let's be used to the likely, unless it is ever to be. And make no wonder, I am quite beholden that we have a serious period of notice of council set out for sixteen months. There is no point having these covers if they're not implemented, even as fairly and destruction were able to be. And that will be the proof we will be hearing this evening.
Councillor Roberts? Honoured speakers, any questions? Is the recommendation read? Thank you. Good old twice mates. Can I remind members, can I remind members that as indicated in the report on the supplementary agenda, in order to suspend proportionality for the committees listed, all members present must vote in very bad with no dissenting votes. This leads to the requirement of section 17, warrant being, both governments are housing out 1989. If there are any members dissenting, then proportionality rules are applied to those committees. Members have therefore been supplied with two alternate options for the allocations of seats set out in pages 300 to 312 of the second supplementary agenda. Appendix 2A, to the report, provides for same seats being allocated by suspension of proportionality rules. In the event that any member votes against this proposal, then the on sale allocations set out in a bed next to be to the reports will apply and all committee seats allocated proportionately. Councillor Roberts?
Can I move that the critical proportions of the city council were set out in the reports may have been noted and the application of proportionality rules be suspended to enable majority of committee seats to be allocated outside of proportionality rules. The seats added in the reports submitted and put near appendix 2A. In the event that one more opposition roots the current table, the offer of a seat, a one more committee allocated outside of proportionality rules, and the seats added in appendix 2A in the reports submitted, the result of vacancy shall revert to be allocated to the lodges of the council in accordance to vehicle principles which will be allocation seats. And this is in case, as is the case of labour laws, education, adult and children's social care and cultural studies committees, where the green parties can have the offer of a seat. In accordance with the Reclamation, Reclamation 1 and 2, the appointments of members to committee confirmed in accordance to the appendix 3 to the report are segregated to all members. The proposed appointments of chairs of committees to be approved in accordance with those names set out of appendix 1 to this note. And for any seats not yet allocated to members, the lay of the proposed committee members or alternates designated by groups may be reported to monitoring officer in writing and which will have need to affect the on-truth scene.
Thank you, Councillor Roberts. The right of the speakers? Is the recommendation read? Thank you. I assume I see the derivation of the socialistic functions 2024 to 22, Councillor Roberts?
Right. Following the meeting of the Constitutional Issues Committee held on 30th of May 2024, can I move the first seat delegation, the 2024-22, together with the detailed allocations for responsibility functions, the first of 22, set out in the reports submitted, on page 44, on the Friday of the agenda being approved?
In relation to discharge of executive functions, can I invite Mayor Joanna Calvert to confer the appointments of Deputy Mayor and Cabinet members. Details of which are set out as fast as any is due to this note.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I thought you advised the council that my thinking to the executive major, Lord Mayor, Cabinet members existed by council's decree.
Thank you. I can advise that councillors, Steve Alfred and Peter Mitchell, wish to address the council in relation to the responsibility for council functions. When I call your name and you come forward to the left head at the front of the hall to address the meeting please. If any members wish to speak, please indicate now so that we can know your names and I will guide you forward to the end. Can I invite councillor Steve Alfred to forward the address to the council please?
On the report related to the DP for the managing officer, it has got one of those receiving complaints concerning elected members, wondering whether there is an implication or needs to be said explicitly, whether there should be a duty to investigate those complaints with further need for neutrality, just a momentary tweet about receiving complaints by all access to services in private context.
Councillor Roberts, members, please forward our comments. Councillor Peter Mitchell?
My honourable, my honourable, I do now, Mr Speaker, from the past, I may so be called upon.
Thank you, Councillor. Other honourable speakers? Is the recommendation read? Financial regulations 2024 to 22, Councillor Roberts?
Following the Constitutional Issues Committee held on 30th of May 2021, can I move the proposed financial regulations, the 2024-22, set out in the reports submitted, on page 176 to 192, the agenda being approved?
Other honourable speakers? Is the recommendation read?
Following the Constitutional Issues Committee held on 30th of May 2021, can I move the first conference standing on the 2024-22, set out in the report submitted on pages 25 through 268 of the agenda being approved?
Other honourable speakers? Is the recommendation read?
Can I move that the select committee, which have advised every committee to be approved and adopted, the 2024-22, in accordance with the reports and openly implemented, detailing the terms of governance of the committee, set out on pages 278 to 911 of the first supplementary agenda?
Other honourable speakers? Is the recommendation read?
Following the Constitutional Issues Committee held on 30th of May 2021, incorporating provisions made by that committee during the course of the day, can I move that to move that the recommendation is set out in the report submitted on pages 252 to 268 of the agenda being approved? In relation to potential open analysis, there are four within no confirmation as to the level of state aid and dependent on the outcome of negotiations nationally in relation to provisions to NJC integration and levels. In the event that all of the two NJC integration levels are spread, the relevant percentage increase who reports is full council, together with details of the possible potential changes in the scheme of members of our city to all determination.
Other honourable speakers? Is the recommendation read?
Can I move the change of dates, the 2024-22, set out on pages 252 to 268, the agenda being approved? And any sorts of progress changes in the change of the dates of 2024-22 are to be settled by a follow consultation with the relevant members, notification issued by the relevant members, and then to change once agreed.
Other honourable speakers? Is the recommendation read?
Following the Constitutional Issues Committee held on 30th of May 2021, can I move that in light of recent quibble to the new cabinet members and the vice for the responsibility that new appointed cabinet members be requested to review their own list of appointments outside bodies in context of adequability helps to reaching council objectives, whether the council needs to be involved in that way at all, and whether the forums with appointed members had any communication or engagement with the organisation within the last couple months. And also be requested to assure that all those elected members who are appointed to be made aware of their legal duties and responsibilities and potential personal liabilities. A further report to be submitted to the next council meeting in June 2021, provide information on the post provisions to be appointed outside bodies, including details of any changes to council representatives, and a further report to be submitted to the next council meeting in June 2021, in respect of shared representation of companies which are owned by the council.
Other honourable speakers? Is the recommendation read?
Can I move the following appointments to be made, to the Liverpool City, which is provided for authority, Mayor Joanna Calvert, Joanna Calvert to be appointed to the city council representative with the counsel of J. Corbett as alternate, and CEO of the group. the counsel of Jay Corbett as alternate, and to the Ouija Scrutiny Committee, Councillors Alan Mondrieu and Adam Thomas, to the Transport Committee, Councillors Stephen Robinson, Nancy Lewis, Asher Bierwelt, Adam Nettie Media.
Councillor Steve Halford? Yeah. An amendment has been received from Councillor Rich Capd, which is attached to the appendix, please, this note, is the amendment sounded? And I would invite Rich Capd to say...
Thank you very much. Well, so perhaps you'll miss the orders, but I'll try to clear this in another way. But there has been a serious call set out today regarding, I think we all just want to see as we can, express our concerns, and our regrets and sort of thing.
Can I just, maybe of the council consignment, please, be answered, please, last minute?
The short of the main job was, I suppose, thank you. What we're dealing with in the moment that we're in today is a simple council, to continue the continued practice which existed in this council since nineteen eighty-five. In that year, the council was abolished, a series of outside boards, authorities created by West, police, fire and transport. And it's slightly different today, in one way or another, all those four functions are still charged now at a city regional level, or a nurse's level, as I say, which is... We've always agreed the same formula for appointing people to these committees. What we've said, and why it's actually a trial and error, but we will look at proportions available to the parties within the council. And we've already agreed that in a previous report. And we reply those of us to the appointments to these external authorities, on the basis that we reply if they have been in the committee of the council. And one exception to that was one year, I think it was two thousand and thirteen, when the other day, I'll say that way, us made, as they agreed, to agree an additional Labour over the council's authority, because problems at that time within the Labour group were as authority, and we agreed, we took, I don't know who this, we did that by agreement. If you look at proportions that we've already agreed, you will find that the committee full, i.e. the membership of the Transport Committee, which does appear, should be three Labour members and one Liberal Democrat member. Now, we don't have to use that, because there is a number of discretion on some of Liverpool City regional boards. But I have yet to see a justification from anyone as to why we move away with something which has worked well and failed for thirty-six years. Remind you that these parties go up and down, and it's important for those in control to keep a small party up. Because one day, my party, I would believe, and probably you go further, he will be with his party, I think, because that's the way that it works everywhere.
I would like you to stop this.
And therefore, I would ask you to continue with the principle of fairness, which should be followed by Labour and Liberal and Liberal Democrats in the sessions since nineteen eighty-five, or explain why we're not doing that.
Thank you, councillor. My honourable councillors, the second of the amendments.
Thank you, my honourable members, congratulations on your vote for the table. A week ago, we were setting this all, and we were making scrutiny to keep the political decision-making. Well, in absolute years, we've seen poor decision-making in the transport, particularly in cities that have moved the strategy, where the Labour members are finally recognizing the disruption of the transport and the way it works. Concerns are completely ignored by opposition members of the postal function in action two years ago. The council is now raising for these works to be completed, because more council tax pay is not even concerned with being made. Good scrutiny produces better decisions and safe money. And that scrutiny is stronger when it's not just a warm party scrutinizing its own actions. So it's disappointing that Labour have decided to throw proportionality in the council window and take all positions on the council in its place. And as councillor Nickham said, this is contrary to all people discussing the practice, not just since they became in control, not just during the last administration, but since these long decrees to follow the mission of the side of the council in nineteen eighty-five. You have the opportunity this evening to do the right thing and ensure the greatest scrutiny you have ever experienced.
Our final speaker is, our final speaker is councillor Rupert, who may respond as they rise up with why or otherwise on debate whether the amendments passed after the oral adjournments.
Thank you. And the amendments are rejected. The Liberal Democrats see twenty-five percent of the representation, with only a certain percent of the seats, are voted out of the council.
Thank you, councillor. So first, we will vote on the amendments. First, we saw the amendment by Councillor Rich Capd. All those members for the amendments? All those members against the amendments? Do any members wish to abstain on the amendments? Forty members succeed against fifty-seven, no objections, so the amendment is lost. We will now vote on the substantive version. Vote is now on the original substantive version. All those members for the original substantive version? All those members against the original substantive version? Do any members wish to abstain on the original substantive version? Sixty-one for, none against, and twelve no objections, so it is tied. Thank you, councillor. Appointments to base the side of the authorities, councillor Rupert?
Can I move that the appointments of late members to the following side of the authorities for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, comprising most side by the rest of the authority, councillor Shannon Connor, Mrs Hayton, Lady Inver, Adam Thomas and James Roberts, the most side of the side in weight of authority, councillors of all the halls, Joe Anderson to the concessions, and to the peace of crime panel, councillor Bob Ramory and Calum Skeeter.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Malcolm, can he?
Thank you, my honourable honourable councillors, to the following side of the authorities for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, the most side by the rest of the authority, the councillor Adam Dickinson, and to the peace of crime panel, can I, councillor?
Thank you, councillor. Honourable speakers, is that a read? Appointments to the AJM Assembly, councillor Rupert?
Can I move that in relation to appointment to my left's side's votes, the AJM Assembly, of the four proposed per appointments, Mayor John Anderson twice by three votes, and the remaining three appointments to each twice two votes. The designation of rank of cabinet members to this person is to be preferred in writing to the city solicitor, and included within the minutes of this meeting.
Honourable speakers, is that a read? Thank you. Can I advise members that this is the last city council meeting for Jeanette Lomond, our city solicitor, and I would like, on behalf of all the council, to thank her for her ease of service, and wish her the best of luck for her future job. And we say with our hands, please? Jeanette, you will read this. And before I end the meeting, I've been asked by councillor Peter Mitchell if we would indulge you for a little torture. So we need to suspend the standard orders. So the Peter can address us about today's announcements in relation to the points, Hilary reporting, is the councillor going to do this? Thank you, councillor.
My honourable honourable members, congratulations on your wonderful day. This was a very exciting day, that's the council which can't understand the situation. I'm almost in despair that I have to address the council of Hilary, and those who grew normally for a while, know I was at Hilary, I was on the case, she had a golden letter to me, and sold along with a family friend's set of life as a star of ours. And when everyone stopped in front of the church to cheer her, it was a great show that was proud and happy for all of us. You know, I'm sure, I've asked all these parents around now.